Okay, good evening. This is Enid Lapellis. Today is February 22nd, 2021, and the time is 8:01 PM. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of America, to the one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please allow me to confirm the presence of those town council members and any other staff or anticipated participants are present. So DeeDee?
Present.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, present.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, present.
Terry Rooney? Okay, we'll come back to him. John Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella here.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott here.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke here.
Kevin Reed? All right, I'm back to Terry Rooney.
Madam Chair, sorry, I had a call come in and I hit the wrong button. I hung up.
Okay, so Terry's here then. Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed will not be present this evening.
Thank you. So we have eight members. Okay, I'm appointing John Formicella as parliamentarian. And this meeting will be conducted as a hybrid meeting as follows. Town council members, designated staff, invited presenters, and members of the press may attend in person or remotely. Public access to this meeting will be limited to joining the meeting as follows. A limited number of in-person public attendees will be permitted based upon the reduced capacity to attend in person, let's say, sorry, of the meeting pursuant to the governor's executive orders. Any member of the public wishing to attend in person must email membergo@monrosec.org at least 24 hours in advance. You'll be notified as to whether or space, whether or not space is available. All members of the public may attend remotely as follows via computer, tablet, smartphone, or via phone. Okay, going on. Any objections to me passing the consent calendar as presented?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, this is Tony. I have an amendment I'd like to make for the minutes.
Okay.
Under Appointments, Letter C, the last sentence of the of the discussion has, says Councilman Scott, "I appreciate the good job that the First Electman Kelly is doing." Well, that is absolutely correct, and I can second that again this time. The point of my comments, I think, were missed. I just want to reiterate them to make sure they're captured in the minutes. I wanted to point out that the point that was being made by myself was that the charter allows the first selectman in this scenario to make appointments, right? And he's doing, what he's doing is giving the courtesy to both, and courtesy is being the key word, courtesy to both parties, parties to allow them to recommend somebody to the, that ultimately goes through to the council. He's just following suit of what has been going through multiple administrations from both parties over the last, you know, many years. And I just wanted to call that out, that the courtesy was given by a current first selectman and previous first selectman. So I just wanted that to be captured in the minutes, if possible.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Scott. Yes.
First, I've been calling, I have a couple of other items on the minutes that I'd like to just call to the council's attention for consideration to correct. One is just a minor, a minor scrivener's error. Under the Town Council EMS Building Committee Report, there was a reference to the STEAP Grant. STEAP is an acronym. It's all capitals, S-T-E-A-P. If that could be corrected. And then in my report, at the very end of my report, Councilmember Mauer had asked about the COVID vaccination concept of a waitlist. And it's, in the minutes, stated that, at the end, it said, however, there are zero, haven't been any left, vaccines left over. I think it's just probably a typo there. But more importantly, I just wanted to clarify, perhaps what I said at the time wasn't fully clear. The, we did not have a formal waitlist per se prior, but as, what I was saying was that in prior clinics, we had very, very small populations of people. They were first responders, healthcare workers, and then a very unique way, we're handling the 75-plus community outside of the VAM system because of that small population and the challenges they were having. And so we were utilizing already known identified people to call in when we had any one or two or whatever doses left over. So we were not, you know, vaccine was not being wasted, however, it wasn't a defined list per se. That said, I do have updates on this, which I'll cover when I do my report, but I just wanted to clarify that in the minutes. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak during this section?
Madam Chair, just a motion, Madam Chair, just a motion to amend, motion to amend the minutes as discussed by Councilman Scott and the First Selectman.
Jonathan Formicella, second.
Okay, discussion. Don't think we really need it. So let's do a vote. I'll do the roll call. I think that's the best way of doing a vote. So DeeDee?
DeeDee Martin, aye.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
John Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
And Enid Lapellis, aye. So this motion passes eight to zero. Okay, so I hear I present the consent calendar as presented. The communications, I hereby ask that communications item A to K be referenced in the minutes of the meeting. Public participation, is there any public participation out there?
Yes, Madam Chair, Steve Kirsch.
Fine, go right ahead.
Steve Kirsch, 35, Applegate Lane. For the record, I'm a member of the Board of Finance, however, I'm speaking solely for myself tonight. One question on, in your consent agenda that you just passed was the purchase of a truck for DPW, and I was wondering if anybody could state for the record what the expected life expectancy is on that vehicle? I see there's warranty covering various things for up to five years, but I wondered what the life expectancy of that vehicle is. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, can anybody speak on that? Kelly, possibly?
I will consult with our Public Works Director and get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. Any other public participation? Going on to appointments. I understand that the appointment presented will be resubmitted at the next town council meeting, which is by Mrs. Martin, who would have done the appointment. Going on to...
That's correct. I just wanted to say that's correct.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that. Going on to action items. So DeeDee, Town Council Committee on Planning and Zoning, Public Works, Park and Rec Matters. Anything on Park and Rec?
Nothing current, Madam Chairman, thank you.
Okay, going on to Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters. I believe, since Mr. Reed isn't there, is Mr. Formicella or Mr. Mauer going to present?
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. At our LNA meeting earlier this evening, we discussed both items in our consent agenda, Resolution 2118, as well as 2122, both of which were, were sent here to Town Council for our consideration, as well as we also discussed the American Medical Response Two-Way Paramedic Intercept Agreement, which is Resolution 21-20, as well as Resolution 21-21, which is 21 Summer Concert Series Performance Agreements, both of which were sent to Town Council for consideration. Additionally, we had two other items on our agenda this evening. Discussion of light regulations, as well as a discussion on the policies and practices of the Town Council as they relate to appointments. Both of those matters have been tabled until after budget season.
Okay, thank you. Going on to Strategic Planning Committee, Mr. Scott?
Yes, I just wanted to let the council know that we'll be meeting, the committee will be meeting tomorrow at four o'clock before the Budget Workshop. To kind of kick off, to kick this off before we have, start meeting with the different department heads, this will help us as we prepare for that. So that meeting will be tomorrow at four.
Thank you very much. Terry Rooney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Last time we met for council, the bid packages were coming in, there was a visit to the Jockeys Hall Fire Department, which we're turning into EMS, a new EMS facility, God willing, or a remodeled facility for EMS. Actually, those bids were due in two o'clock, February 16th. I got news from the Selectmen's Office that there was basically a line of people. We had a response that we never would have expected. We had close to 100 contractors bid for this project. So basically, what that left us with was several hours of opening bid in public forum, separating them, figuring out, you know, the Monroe contractors, things of that nature. So after putting everything together, we have another meeting March 9th to start our selection. Little preview on this, it looks at this point, it's hard to give out exact numbers, but it looks like the town may have saved upwards of $500,000 with competitive bidding. Now, the final number is not in, we don't have it, there's value engineering that goes into this as well, that could take the price down. So we are not at the end, we don't have an established number. But we do know at this point that this was well worth it, doing it this way. So our next meeting once again is March 9th. We will go through bids, and we'll start selecting contractors. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Going on to First Selectman's update, Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Starting out with COVID, as has become the norm, our case rates are improving, as they are throughout the state and throughout the nation. We are currently down to averaging less than four new cases per day. The update on testing, we have two new, we have two urgent care centers that are now offering COVID-19 testing. The Hartford Health, St. Vincent's Urgent Care, that's been in our 111 for some time, and then a new DOCS medical group that opened up on 25. The vaccination updates, we continue to vaccinate, it's over 65, through all the normal, you know, and pushing out all the different options that are out there. We are utilizing the VAM system for our clinics. We have over 2,300 Monroe residents who have been vaccinated, 12% of our population. As I said, we are using VAM's system. Sorry, I'm getting some echo. If there's someone else on who hasn't muted, please mute, because we're getting kind of a bad echo. Thank you. So as I alluded to earlier in my, earlier in the meeting, as I said, we're going to continue to evaluate, and the Health Department's been evaluating, as the eligibility increases, how to continue to identify people in advance who might be willing to be kind of on-call for a vaccination if we have extra doses, and we've kind of run out of the pre-identified population that we know that we were dealing with. So we did actually finish that up last week and launched today what is a standby list, which will be put out every week for specific clinic days. You do need to be eligible, you need to be in the VAM system, because we need, we need to be able to find your VAM's record when you arrive at our clinic. Again, we're cautioning people that this really, this should not be the, their sole source of getting vaccine. We encourage people to make appointments and register, but we know that some of those appointments are, have been kind of far out there for some people. So this is an opportunity for people to be on standby and kind of plan standby, and then we'll call you at the end of the clinic, and as long as you can come in within a short amount of time, and you're willing to cancel your existing appointment, we can get you in that day. This is a very, very, you know, again, to set expectations, this is a very small number of potential doses that would remain. We put a bunch of slots for standby, just because you never know who's going to be available when you, when it comes up, but, you know, this would be, you know, certainly no more than nine, and usually far lower than that. It's usually, you know, two or three doses that might be left over at the end of a clinic. So that is up and running as of today. I think we, I think the standby lists filled up within a half an hour when we put them up. The big news today is that the governor did announce further details on the vaccine eligibility going forward, somewhat of a departure from prior communications. The state is no longer going to be rolling out vaccinations based on frontline essential workers, or those categories, or folks with specific health conditions. The governor cited that there was confusion and a degree of complexity to implement that, and instead is shifting to an age-based approach. So starting March 1st, registration will open to 55 and older, and then it is currently planned that it will go to 45 and older on March 22nd, 35 and older on April 12th, and 16 and over on May 3rd. There is an exception for all pre-K through 12 educators, support staff, bus drivers, basically anyone who is operating inside a school, as well as licensed childcare professionals. They will also be eligible starting March 1st, and we will run basically separate clinics for them, as, as the governor has outlined. That's the way we're going to do it throughout the state. The other updates on COVID, last but not least, is that effective on March 19th, there will be a relaxation on the numbers of people who can gather for private, social, or recreational gatherings, but it is specific to commercial venues. And that will expand to 50% of the capacity, or a max of 100 indoors, or 200 outdoors. Just keep in mind, this does not affect the current limit of private residences, which stays, which is currently still at 10. A few new business updates, switching gears. As I mentioned earlier, the DOCS Urgent Care opened at 427 Main Street. That was a different company, had run an urgent care facility out of there several years ago, so that fills a vacancy there. MMI of Monroe has been approved to build a new, it's nearly 27,000 square foot expansion of their building. It will be for industrial tenant use, and that is at 74 Enterprise Drive. And a third update is that a company called Milton &amp; Goose is moving their warehousing and manufacturing from out of state to Monroe. Milton &amp; Goose makes handcrafted toys. They describe it as high-quality, non-toxic, eco-conscious, and handcrafted. They have headquarters in Stanford, and they will be moving into an existing 20,000-plus square foot facility at 580 Pepper Street, addressing a vacancy there. And my last update just has to be, do with the budget. I have an updated budget schedule, which I can, we will certainly, we can update on the website, and I can send out to any of the council members that are joining remotely. But basically, the changes are that all of the proposed dates for the Board of Finance were accepted by the Board of Finance, so those dates are currently on the schedule as their tentative dates. And I also put together at least our intention now, as far as which departments will be on the lineup for tomorrow, and then on March 1st. There's two updates that I wanted to discuss relative to the lineup. The tax collector and the town clerk were requested by Mr. Mauer and Ms. Lapellis, respectively, and they had each contacted me to say that they're withdrawing their request to meet with those two departments. So before I take them off the list, I wanted to just confirm with the other council members that nobody else was wanting to meet with those departments, and simply did not speak up at the time because they were already on the list. So if I could just get confirmation that no one wants to see them, I will take them off the schedule, and we will proceed accordingly. That's my report.
Thank you. So we have no unfinished business?
Madam Chair, before we move on?
Yes, Mr. Mauer?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions for the Selectmen, or actually, one comment, and then a couple of questions. First, I feel like this might be the place in the meeting for the council to just take a moment of recognition for JP, who has been serving our town, and decided to step away for his, for family time and career time, which is a completely admirable and respectful thing to do. But I just wanted to take a moment to publicly thank him as a member of the council, as in the official capacity there, for all of his work for Monroe.
Echo that, yeah.
And then second, in an attempt to possibly save some time during our budget hearings, I have a couple of questions, if the First Selectman can get answered, that I might not need to speak to specific heads that I had requested. The first one is the Fire Marshal, page 148, on the office expense line. It seems like we've been trending downwards over the years, and I don't know if it's all COVID-related, or especially this year that we've only spent $252. But looking at the office expenses that are marked for next year, there's still almost $1,750 left in their budget for this year. I was wondering if they'd be willing to utilize some of that budget expenditure, some of that budgeted money for this year to purchase those items, and maybe drop their budgeted amount down to the $1,000 mark, something around there for next year's, which would cover basically everything else that they have listed, and seems to be well within their trend when they don't have unusual expenses. Also, for the Fire Marshal, with their operating expense, again, seems to be downward, a downward trend, and we've never gone over $3,000. And again, they have over $3,000 still budgeted in there for this year. If we might be able to drop that number down to the $2,500 to $3,000 range, with the understanding that they have a good amount of money still left in their budget for this year that they might be able to use to do some of the operating, get some of the operating expenses paid out of this year's budget. The next department, and if the, if the answers are affirmative there, I would not need to speak to the Fire Marshal Department Head. The next one is Emergency Management, which is page 153. On the office expense, again, we've never, going back through the history, without extreme expenses, we've never been over the 300 mark, really. They have spent $0 in office expenses as of right now. I was looking to possibly drop that down to a $500 mark, which would more than cover their usual annual expenses. And then in their operating expense, the next line, the $3,750, just is that a new expense, something that we haven't been paying in the past? Because I saw that we didn't have any expense there the last year, and haven't spent anything yet there this year. And if that's a new expense, then all well and good. If, if not, then why were we budgeted there last year and didn't spend any of it? Or maybe it's just yet to come, which is entirely possible. But if the, if there's an affirmative on the office expense decrease, and then an answer to the affirmative that yes, that is an expense that they do expect to pay year after year, and just haven't paid yet this year, I don't need to speak to them? And then the final one is the Health Department, page 176. Which, on their...
Health Department's on the list.
No, they weren't.
I don't think the Health Department's on the list.
They weren't, but I can get it.
Yeah, I just want to...
I thought I had requested them. If not, that's, that's fine. It's on one line, which is the office expenses. Again, we've never gone over 2,000 before. There are only 696 in this year. Was wondering if they're, out of their 3,174, was wondering if they could make some of their purchases off of this year's budget, and drop that expense down to $2,000.
Is that it, Mr. Mauer?
That's it for me. And like I said, if, if those are affirmative, then I have no need to speak to those departments.
Thank you. I will, I will certainly look into it. I can tell you just, without going into these specific cases, I know that a lot of these lines are dramatically down in the current year because of COVID, but I will certainly get you some updates on all those when I've had a chance to look at them in more detail.
Thank you very much, Mr. Selectman, and thank you for your update on COVID as well.
You're very welcome.
Okay, so new business, A, Resolution 21-20. Mr. O'Rourke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move, I move for the adoption of the following resolution. Resolution number 21-20, all that Kenneth M. Calwag, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the two-way paramedic intercept agreement, and any associated documents binding between the American Medical Response for Paramedic Intercept Services.
Do I hear a second to this motion?
Jonathan Formicella, second.
Okay, discussion, the Kellogg's?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as I outlined in my cover memo, you know, AMR, I think you're all aware of, is a, is a commercial EMS provider. They provide paramedic services, among other things, and at times, we utilize them to provide a paramedic on an intercept basis, a mutual aid intercept basis. This would be the circumstance where our ambulance is responding and transporting on a call, but our paramedic is unavailable for, because they're on another call. And it's common in the industry to have a, what is called a paramedic intercept, to have the joint, joint response to provide the advanced life support care. We have an existing agreement with AMR, it goes back to 2012. AMR had asked that we refresh this agreement, because primarily, the rate that we were paying AMR to provide the bundle bill was kind of stuck at $335 per intercept. And, you know, they had asked to raise it to 370, which we feel is reasonable, based upon the amount of time that has transpired. The other changes compared to the old agreement were relatively, you know, minor, housekeeping changes, there were some insurance adjustments based upon recommendations from KERMA, and input from the Town Attorney, all of which AMR accepted. And again, the point of this agreement is really to allow for the bundle bill concept, so that the patient only receives one bill. It's much, when they receive two bills, it's confusing to the patient, and it also can cause circumstances where the patient does not receive the level of insurance coverage that they would otherwise, and they are out of pocket a significant amount of money, more so than they would otherwise be out. So that's pretty much the update. Again, it's been reviewed by the Town Attorney, and I think that's all I got for this one.
Any other discussion by anybody? Otherwise, we're going to vote, roll call seems to be best. DeeDee? DeeDee?
DeeDee Martin, aye.
Jen?
Jen Aguilar, aye.
Jason?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry?
Terry Rooney, aye.
John?
John Formicella, aye.
Tony?
Tony Scott, aye.
Sean?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
And myself, Enid Lapelis, aye. So this carries eight to zero. Pass it. Going on to Resolution 21 dash 21, to consider an act upon a resolution, going 2021 Summer Concert Series Performance Agreements. Mr. O'Rourke?
Move for the adoption of the following resolution, Resolution Number 21 dash 21, resolve that Kenneth M. Calw, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe, the following performance agreements with the town of Monroe Concert Series contract addendum, and any associated documents binding between the parties for the 2021 Summer Concert Series at Wolf Park. One, night shift. Two, Pierce Campbell's DBA 60s satisfaction. Be it resolved, uh, be it further resolved, the first, uh, selectman is authorized to amend these agreements as may be necessary for and limited to the rescheduling of the performance dates.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Do I hear a second to this motion?
Time for Kellogg's second.
Discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, uh, Missy Oroz, our Parks Director, is starting to book the summer concert, uh, performance bands. Uh, we certainly, uh, are anticipating that we will be able to do a summer concert series minimally, uh, the way it was done, uh, last year, but hopefully, uh, the more traditional summer concert. Uh, we have two bands that she's been able to, uh, get agreements with, and so we just figured, as these, uh, were ready, we'd, uh, try and get these, uh, before you so we could lock in the dates. Um, as you noted in the resolution, uh, we have the artists' agreements, but, um, they also will incorporate the standard contract addendum that was, um, discussed and approved, uh, at the last, uh, last year's, uh, round of agreements.
Any further discussion? O'Rourke, voting on this motion. DeeDee?
DeeDee Martin, aye.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
John Formicella?
John Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Sean, Sean, yeah, Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
And myself, Enid Lapelis, aye. So this motion passes eight to zero. Second public participation, anybody wish to participate? I don't see anybody. Anybody else see anybody for public participation?
No.
Thank you. So I'm adjourning this meeting at 8:34 PM. Next meeting is March 8th. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Good night.